Georgia's not coming.
Gotcha.
Good evening and welcome to the special meeting of the South Hebron City Council. Today is Thursday, January 16th, 2025. This meeting is called to order. Could we have a roll call, please? Megan?
Of course. Jeff Arnold. Mary Hasley.
Here.
Wendy Onuki.
Here.
Joe Reiser.
Here.
George Sleeper. Letitia Wilkins.
Here.
Annie Brown.
Here. Could we have a motion to excuse Mr. Arnold and Mr. Sleeper?
I'll move to excuse Councilperson Arnold and Councilperson Sleeper.
Support.
All in favor say yes.
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 Opposed? They are excused. Thank you. And now, the City Council will be asked to consider a motion to go into closed session under Section 818 of Michigan's Open Meetings Act to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute, specifically a written legal memorandum from the city attorney protected under attorney-client privilege regarding land use matters. Is there a motion?
I move to go into closed session as read by the mayor.
A second. A roll call, please.
Hasley.
Yes.
Onuki.
Yes.
Reiser.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
And Brown.
Yes. And we're doing public comment when we return.
That's correct.
Thank you. Okay. We'll be back.
[889.32]
We're back on broadcast.
Is there a motion to go back into open session?
I move to go back into open session.
Second.
All the favors say yes?
Yes.
We're back in open session. Kate.
Oh, thank you, Mayor.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Our attorney from Blooms Lockett, Dave Everly, is here. Dave, I think we would like to talk about some options. I know we've got some public comment that we've got next on our agenda. It's we can take public comment or we can kind of talk about our next options or whatever you'd like to do, Mayor.
Let's start with public comment.
Very good. This is for five minutes?
This is for five minutes. And let's take comments on the topic that's on the agenda. So if anyone would like to come forward and speak.
Good evening. Bob Sherman, 250 North Shore Drive. Just a comment. I've read the proposed text multiple times. And I just have to wonder how this has been vetted by city attorneys or otherwise. Here's one simple example. I believe, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, the Michigan Zoning and Enabling Act makes reference to a principal residence exemption. And probably many of you, as I, have a principal residence exemption. The draft ordinance doesn't speak to that. It says a personal resident exemption. Trivial perhaps, but there's a number of others that I won't go into where it just indicates that maybe this hasn't had the review and vetting that it ought to have. I don't think we should be making reference to personal resident exemptions if it doesn't even exist. Call it what it is.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Good afternoon. Ross Stein, 14149 73rd Street. I've had over 30 years' experience on the township board. I hope with this, which you have before you, to study, I hope that you have had the recommendation of staff, legal counsel, and your planning commission on this. I hope that you don't do something that maybe you shouldn't do, that you could be held personally responsible for and not covered by law or insurance. And if you're writing your own ordinance, it's like a doctor taking care of himself. That's not a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stein.
Hi, I'm Elaine Herbert, 404 North Shore Drive. Well, this is a surprise. Came up fast, didn't it? We waited 10 years for this, but here it is today. Everyone that I've spoken to says yes to this zoning reform. It seems rushed. I get it. We are supposed to have an SDR staff annual report by now and perhaps a lottery, and there's a moratorium pending, so let's go. This zoning reform ordinance has been public to the Planning Commission and City Council and the public since at least the December 2nd City Council Agenda Packet. It's not news. Was in the Network for Stakeholders, asked for input weeks before that. It's ready to go to Planning Commission for their tweaking, a public hearing there, and a recommendation to City Council. And then it comes here to City Council for public hearing and tweaking and hopefully your passage. Yes, let's do it. It's a good reform ordinance. Let's get it done now. So the 2025 seasons SDR registrations will be lawfully existing SDRs for the sakes of all stakeholders. This is a nice piece of planning. But not if you subtract zoning compliance requirements that have been in place from day one, 2016, out of this reform zoning ordinance. Or if you scuttle reform, you cannot, if the lawyers are rattling sabers behind the scenes, then we need a second opinion lawyer-wise, or two second opinions lawyer-wise. Communities all over Michigan and the United States are winning land use zoning arguments in court. Land use is fine and dandy and appropriate. We're all for it, but only if zoning has been compliant and registrations proper. That's fair. Reform must restore the original agreements of zoning compliance, or it isn't reform. It's amnesty and a cover-up. It's not reform. So proof that you existed lawfully in accordance with zoning compliance from the start, and we agree that you have land use. This isn't complicated, so do not be swayed. Don't butcher this draft, pass this as it is or with a few tweaks as fast as possible. On the contrary, the code of ordinance, the regulatory, still needs work and can easily be a month or two behind the zoning. Existing Code X will hold over for an extra couple of weeks for tweaking, and this regulatory draft is unacceptable and absolutely should not be rushed to pass at the 11th hour when there's no pressing need. Yes, it needs to be synced with the zoning, but not absolutely immediately. It's not ready. Most serious is it still gives the zoning administration carte blanche to waive onsite parking requirements, which is exactly what got us into this mess a decade ago. Even the new recodified zoning specifically states that all SDRs must have onsite parking and egress on the property it serves. No exceptions are allowed to apply. So why let the STR regulatory code say that the zoning administrator can grant exceptions? That makes zero sense. The zoning administrator is not the ZBA, which is where a non-onsite parking compliant STR owner can take their requests for zoning variance if they need or want one. One rule for all. And then in the regulatory, you need to fix enforcement, which also got us into this mess. The regulatory is not ready for public hearing. Set it on the City Council.
You have one minute.
Thank you. The regulatory is not ready for public hearing yet. Set it on the City Council agenda to be fixed first. You can do that in a meeting, maybe two, maybe one. In the meantime, today, now, let's do the zoning part. Yes to this draft with a few minor tweaks. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, this is the zoning we want. Send it to planning. Let them tweak it and bring it back. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Lisa Crupiers, 561 Indiana. Many of us residents are very excited that this ordinance is going forward to Planning Commission and council for public hearings. It is the ordinance that we want. We will not accept any changes that include a reduction in zoning, compliance, and proof of it. Proof of lawful existence. Otherwise, we have some ideas for fine-tuning it with definitions and other ideas at public hearings at Planning Commission and City Council. But this is the ordinance that we endorse. Of course, as Ms. Herbert said, there still is the concern and question about enforcement. As always, it's busier here in the summers. How is the enforcement going to be done effectively? The attorney said that perhaps we need to consider that. I think it should not be to the exclusion of anything in the ordinance as it's written. Also, if I could just say, there's been several times that I've been wanting to call from the audience "mic", because people do not have the mic at their mouth when they speak. And so if that is the case, could somebody please let the speaker know so that everybody can hear? Thank you.
Hi, Amy Nichols, 541 Woodbridge Circle. I am a member of Planning Commission, full disclosure. And I'm sure like all the other planning commissioners, my phone has been ringing off the hook today in regards to this discussion item tonight. And I have to say that 99% of the people who have reached out to me are not in support of what is happening tonight due to the fact that you've really had to consult an attorney before you've even brought it to set Planning Commission. So I urge you, please listen to what your attorney says. Don't send it to us unless you are fully sure that there will be no legal repercussions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments? If not,
Joe Wilkins, 811 Indiana Street. I am standing in full support of the ordinance, proposed ordinance on today. I believe it's a start. After sitting here over and over in meetings, listening to what the residents want, I think it falls short. So I believe we need to tweak it quite a bit to meet the desires of year-round residents. But it is a good start. And just on a personal note, I am a little disturbed that it's taken this long. You know, you hear people talk about, "We're pushing this through. It's fast." And again, I told you before that it's been many years. We've sat here with this thing. It's been kicked down the road. I think it was an issue in 2016 when our government allowed to handle SDRs in this way. It was a zoning issue. I said it a long time ago. Other cities have learned from our failure to deal with this issue by not allowing SDRs in residential areas, setting a much smaller number of allow permits, you know, requiring that these SDRs be primary places of residence, and other restrictions that they have put on it to deal with it. Other cities have learned. I don't buy into this scare tactic of being sued. I think we need to do something to put our arms around it and bring this number down. As a result of the decision made in 2016, South Haven has become a grave outlier when it comes to SDRs. I believe that, I was looking at some old notes. That decision has caused a decline in our city population. Lauren pay job, our paying jobs reduced the year-round housing, as well as other areas that are being impacted because of SDRs. The Upjohn Report warned us, and I quote, "The community economic and community development efforts should be focused on increasing the income and wealth of its residents, and that South Haven should not become solely beach town," unquote. This report highlighted the effects of having too many SDRs. So I believe anything that we could do to try to push this along the way is a good first step. So I am concerned that it is taking or has taken this long. So is it perfect? No, but I think it's a good first start. Failure to come to a place where we do have a ordinance that's been written and approved by the residents, the desires of the residents, I believe in my opinion, you know, falls on the city. Should not have taken that long or this long to get to a place of dealing with SDRs. And so I'm hoping tonight that the council would push this on to try to come to someplace where the residents' concerns and decisions, concerns about SDRs are being heard in a way of an ordinance on today. So again, I am in support, and I want to say this before I take my seat, that I think it's time that we do this because this online bullying is a direct result of this council and this staff not doing what we know we should have done a long time ago. And so now I think, you know,
One minute.
I think if we make the right choice today, it will show the community that we are heading in the right direction to try to put this to bed because all this doing is causing greater division. And I want to say to the people that are doing this bullying online, and you claim to be a good resident of this city, that's not how a responsible resident respond and act. You get on Facebook and you bully council people. That is not right. That's not a good behavior, and it does not represent our city well. And so if you want to go speak as a spokesman to somebody that say they really care about their community, you don't get on Facebook and bash people with lies. That kind of behavior needs to stop. Thank you.
Any other comments? Kate.
Thank you, Mayor. So we have Attorney Dave Everly from Blooms Lockett, and I'd like to turn this over to Dave.
Thanks, Kate. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Dave Everly with the City Attorney's Office. Thank you for having me. It's always a pleasure to see everyone in person. Short-term rentals. First of all, I want to commend the diligent manner in which council has approached this issue. I know I've listened to a couple of public comments on it, and I know it's a hot and contentious issue, but I feel like council is very much trying to do the right things, although it may not be going as fast as we like it. I also want to thank Councilmember Housley, excuse me, for providing the drafts, which are the subject of our discussion this evening, and for providing them in an effort to kind of move things forward and to try and capture some of the comments she's heard from members of the community to bring them before council in our office so that we can try to tie this issue off in a timely manner. I will not go into the details of what we discussed in closed session. Suffice to say that I expressed my concerns with the proposed draft, understanding it was intended to be just a draft to spur conversation. So I think the takeaway and my advice to council is on these drafts is not to move forward with them without significant revision. Of course, council, you are the boss. It is my job only to make sure that you are as informed as I can make you so that you can make an informed decision, weighing the policy options and weighing the legal risks associated with those policy options. So to the extent council is inclined to move forward with the drafts presented tonight with little or no changes, the zoning one would have to be sent to the Planning Commission so it could go through the public hearing process. If council is inclined to do that, I would recommend that council be very specific in terms of what their expectations are. You know, is the expectation that it be workshopped at Planning Commission or simply just have the public hearing? And in your recommendation to adopt, not adopt, provide comments at that point. But the point would be for council to clarify, "We want it quick," or "We want you to actually do more work on it." In terms of the non-zoning or licensing ordinance, if council is inclined to move forward with that with little or no changes as made tonight, that would then be set for a public hearing at a later date of council. Today would be considered, after any changes were made, the first reading in compliance with the charter. Go to the public hearing, and then we'd come back to council. Nothing requires you to adopt a zoning ordinance and a regulatory ordinance addressing the same subject matter at the same time. However, it's always our office's recommendation that when, if you are faced with a zoning ordinance and a licensing ordinance addressing the same subject matter, that you have both ordinances before you and then adopt them both at the same time, just in case there is any need to make last-minute changes. So that's option one if council's inclined to proceed with the drafts provided today. I think there is another option that would allow our office to work through some of the issues that we discussed in closed session. I understand that many feel that this issue's kind of been beaten to death. And I think when you work an issue on such a minute level and so hard, sometimes you lose the forest for the trees. And it would be helpful, at least from our office's perspective, if the desire is for us to put together another draft to bring forward, to have just crystal-clear guidance, reiterating guidance in terms of what are the policy objectives council hopes to achieve? And then our office can come back and provide an ordinance with options to help you accomplish those policy objectives. And we, you know, like, there's always risk, right? And it's council's job to decide how much risk and where we're willing to accept that risk. So when we come back with an ordinance, it's like, hey, here's one way of doing it. There are other ways of doing it. Here's what you need to know about those options, and then council plugs and plays. I think historically, I think it would be helpful if we were, if council... I think historically that it would, I think it would be helpful if we were, if council was inclined to do something along those lines, for council to have a bit of a working, a work group with, working with our office. That could be comprised of perhaps the mayor and Councilmember Housley, working in conjunction with our office, the city manager and the zoning administrator, to take the guidance given by council tonight, or a later work session if council would like, and then to workshop that ordinance and bring it back. The hope being that between having perhaps the mayor, Councilmember Housley as part of that working group, we would be able to kind of hammer out some of the more contentious or detailed issues so that the item that comes before council is a much more of a complete product. So that said, once again, we're happy to take direction from council. I'm happy to answer any questions from council and to provide my input on anything council would like me to provide input on, absent, I will not talk about what we talked about in closed session.
First of all, just as far as the minutes go, I would like the minutes to note that these drafts and the memo were written by Councilmember Housley.
Point of order.
What's your point?
They were, I submitted them. I had in point of order that, I submitted them to Kate for use, but they, I may have trans, I have, I may have presented them, but they were not based on just my, to avoid any inference, they are not based on just my point of view. They were from a culmination of input from listening to people who speak at the podium, who email us, who contacted me, who stopped me in the grocery store, who stopped me on the street. So they are not, to avoid any inference, that these are my personal beliefs. These are not. These are a culmination of what I have heard from our residents.
And as our attorney said, the drafts were provided by Mary Housley. Secondly, I, I had a lot of messages and calls about the bottom of page three that discusses specified anatomical areas and specified sexual activities. Under anatomical areas.
Point of order.
Go ahead.
The discussion of anatomical areas in the draft are based on the terms that were added to the zoning ordinance per se. They were added as part of the recodification, which was, the final draft of the recodification was completed in December of 2023, before I was even seated. If you look at the zoning ordinance online, those terms are there. They are on page 40 of 231 of the zoning ordinance that we adopted in December of 2024 and became effective in Jan- on January 1st, 2025. Those are not from me. That is because the attorney included the whole section of the zoning ordinance for the S definitions. It had nothing to do with regard to what I had provided to Kate.
These are on the bottom of page three in the draft that was provided by Mary Housley for the sake of
Point of order, that, that is not the draft that I had provided. The draft I had provided is represented in the December 2nd, 2024, so, uh, city council meeting. The draft that is represented in tonight's city council agenda packet is the rewriting, reformatting of the material from the city attorney and the city attorney incorporating definitions into the zoning ordinance definition. And that is not what I, I provided, nothing except with regard to terminology related to zoning. And if necessary, the attorney can explain why all those terms are in the draft in the agenda packet today and that they were not from me.
Just for the sake of transparency, I will read on. Anatomical areas, number one.
Excuse me, Mayor. I find this to be a waste of our time.
And offensive.
This is, yes. These are definitions that are in our ordinance, and they are not specific to what Mary has put forth. I feel like we should move on from this.
This is in a document that is open to the public.
Right. And the public can go on our website and find the same language.
I'm moving on.
Thank you.
Less than completely and opaquely covered human genitals.
Objection. I don't want this to keep going.
This is offensive language that is unrelated to the short-term rental. This material was added by legal counsel as part of the ordinance to have a complete ordinance to send to zoning, and that is not what I provided. And I should not be associated with it, and that's inflammatory.
This is what you provided. It's on the bottom of page three. I just want to comment on sodomy because
Mayor, can we move on? This is so unhelpful.
Excuse me.
We've got to move on, Kate, please.
All order.
Just for the sake of our LGBTQ community, sodomy is no longer an appropriate term.
Point of order. We do not need to be going through our definitions of our ordinances or wherever you're getting that from. It does not have to do with our discussion today. You can try to flat, fan flames and make people angry, or we can do what we're meant to be doing.
I agree. I apologize to our LGBTQ community.
Point of order, we've got to move forward. We're not there for that.
Appeal, appeal. Point of order, appeal. The vote, a vote by the city council of whether this is appropriate or not is hereby called. Your refusal to stop has been a point of order. I appealed it. It's now up for vote. If the city council votes in majority, then we proceed because the inflammatory language that you are reading is not associated with what I provided. What I provided is in the December 2nd, 2024 city council agenda packet.
Mayor, I, before more is said on this topic, I will say, I, in looking at some of the documents, I, there is some confusion on my end as to what exactly was provided and what may have been pulled over in an effort to re, just restate a whole section. So out of fairness to everyone, I will say there is the possibility that those terms were pulled from an old ordinance, an existing ordinance,
The new ordinance.
The new ordinance and inserted in an effort to just restate the whole section. Again, I would have to look back in my emails to see, but I, I'm not 100% clear to be able to provide an input one way, one way or the other. But I do want to say that there's a possibility that those were just inserted by our office and, and restating the whole section.
Because that's, when we do an ordinance, we do have to restate all the definitions in a section.
So it looks like, to the extent, I mean, do we, you still want me to comment on this?
Sure.
Yeah, okay. I'm looking at my email in which Councilmember Housley provided the zoning draft. I don't see the definitions referenced in what she provided. They are in the new zoning ordinance, correct, Kelly? So what happened, when our office was asked to take what Councilmember Housley provided and put it into an ordinance format, just making no real substantive changes, because the, it's often easier, as I believe Kate was going to say, to just restate the whole section because you're inserting definitions, you want everything to be alphabetical. The remaining S definitions in the currently adopted zoning ordinance were pulled over, and the new definitions provided by Councilmember Housley in her draft were inserted in the proper alphabetical location.
Thank you.
So, so Attorney Everly has kind of laid out a couple of options here. We, one, have what, what has been provided here, and we've had discussion about some concerns on that. Otherwise, we can look to setting up a work group, as Attorney Everly has talked about, and meeting, you know, quite regularly to get this hammered out. And so would that be the, the idea of councils to set up a work group and to kind of hammer out these, these details?
May, yeah.
Go ahead.
May I propose a third option? So I pulled up the ordinance that was sent forward from Planning Commission and was presented to the city council in November 11th, um, agenda packet. And I have provide, I identified what I thought were some omissions that we didn't cover. And I thank Mr. Sherman for identifying one other error that's been found because the language that he took exception with, the principal residence, if you look at the material from November 18th, actually, personal is stricken and principal is inserted by the attorney that was presented to city council. So that's not from me, that's from the city council. So yes, it does appear that we need more review of what Planning Commission reviewed. And what I would recommend is that legal counsel review these relatively minor changes and opine whether we, if those would meet, I think, the goals. And the goals, I believe, are reducing the number of short-term rental business units, specifically in our residential neighborhoods, and addressing parking and occupancy. The parking and occupancy are really more in the code of ordinance versus the zoning ordinance, but it would be very helpful to address the cap and ensuring, I think, one specific concern that I have heard several times is that the ordinance that, or the, the draft that was sent to Planning Commission and sent back unchanged from Planning Commission did not address a concern that the, setting the cap at the number of currently existing short-term rentals fails to take into consideration that there may be some short-term rentals that were improperly granted. And as we have been advised, if it hasn't been properly granted, a zoning right does not apply. So is there a way to set a cap that does not rely on the total number of business short-term rentals that are currently issued?
When drafting legislation, as I said earlier, there's always lots of options, right? And those options are associated with risks. So to the question of, can you set a cap? Yes. Are there risks associated with that? Yes. Can you set a cap that says this cap doesn't apply to lawful, non-conforming use? Is that what you're saying, Councilmember Housley?
Well, I would say they are unlawful because it was improperly granted. So they never got the right that they think they
So, and I guess I would, one of the, one of the hard things, when, when you have council members who are, who are working so diligently on an issue is oftentimes you, you want to focus on this very specific issue, right? And that's, that is commendable. And I will get to your question, ma'am.
But my concern is, I mean, my, the goal, our goal is to reduce the number of business short-term rentals. If someone has a permit that was not proper, that's not lawful, that would then be reduced. So we potentially could reduce the number.
It is, it is hard, when, when you are doing legislation like this, you should really do it with an eye forward. What do we want the cap to be moving forward? Because all those questions about, is short-term rental A or short-term rental B lawful, non-conforming? Was the permit properly issued, whatnot? Those are all very fact-specific questions that will have to be, you know, ultimately staff will have to review. We're gonna, we could end up, if we deny on a certain basis, you know, you end up in court, you're not lawful, non-conforming. You are lawful, non-conforming, we argue about it. So I would really encourage council to, in moving forward, to say, hey, this is what we want our cap to be, and once those licenses are applied for, they're, they're used up. Now, as with any cap, if you have somebody who is claiming a lawful, non-conforming use, and now we're saying you don't get a license for whatever reason it may be, there's a, there's a point of friction there, there's a point of argument there. And there are legal arguments, I believe, that that is something we can do. We can say, so sorry, yes, you were a lawful, non-conforming use, or, but you have, you don't, you're not properly licensed, and because of that, you can't operate. Now, if you do something like that, obviously, there's, there's risk associated with that, and I don't want to go into all the specific arguments. But again, it's an, it's an option.
Not to cut you off, but maybe to narrow and, and resolve more quickly. So you said, set the cap of where we want it to be. In the ordinance that we sent to city, to Planning Commission and came back from Planning Commission, we just, it is the maximum number that are currently out there. I believe a majority of city council members, and what I hear from residents, is we want a definitive bottom number, and that was never inserted. So if we are looking forward and we want to set a maximum number, that number is going to be below the current number of issued permits. So how do we handle that, the, the number we want, the target number we want going forward with the number we have? Because that hasn't, was not addressed.
I see what you're saying.
It went to Planning Commission, what, and, and despite it being raised during Planning Commission, and that was addressed in my draft because of the concerns I was having. And that is where I think the, one of the biggest things in the zoning ordinance hiccups is we do want a targeted lower number. How do we get there? Because what we've seen so far does not address that concern.
I understand what you're saying now. Thank, thank you for clarifying, yeah. There, there, I think there are ways to go about that, and if I, if I, now that I understand what you're saying, it's, do we say, here's the cap, but if you can prove lawful, non-conforming, we're willing to, to extend you a new number in addition, and a number on, you don't, the cap doesn't apply, is essentially what you want to say.
Oh, maybe that, so, yes. So in what I had provided Wednesday, yesterday, because I only started, yeah, anyway, I had an exclusion, and I see that's where the exclusion could go, is that if you are lawfully existing, although the total number is above the cap, you can continue as long as you're lawfully existing.
And you would be eligible for a
A renewal.
A plus-up on the, on the number, right? I think, I think that's, there, we could definitely pursue something like that. Again, it's, it's just a range of, I'd have to work it, work it a little bit, massage it, but it's just, yeah, there's, there's ways to, to go about getting where you want to be. And again, council's expressed that a hard cap is important. The, from a policy perspective, it's like, okay, well, what's the why behind that? And maybe we can massage it and say, okay, well, we can still achieve your why with, with a cap, but a higher cap, we're doing some other things to reduce risk. So again, it's, it's, it's us taking the end state, the whys, and being, and working those things out to say, okay, here's the options that we think will, the legal, the legal language we think will achieve your policy objectives, and here's the risks associated with those. And then you get to decide which ones are on point and also carry the amount of risk that you're willing to accept. But I now understand what you're saying. I thank you for, thank you for clarifying that.
I support, oh, go ahead.
I just want to add one thing. It was stated earlier, and it relates to this issue. I'm sorry, I forgot her name from the Planning Commission,
Kelly?
But said that we disagree. Well, please know that what I suggested to city council and what Mary wrote up is right here from the Planning Commission. So now I want to read to you one line which pertains to the cap, and this is quote from the Planning Commission. "The cap could be based, for example, on a percentage of the annual dwelling unit data from the U.S. Census." And then we have that number. So this is, I just want to make the point, it's more than just the city council. It is, in fact, the planning that's addressed this and many other issues, and they're all right here. It's right from the Planning Commission. So I just want to make that point clear. And then one other point. I find it, trying to pick my words carefully. I find the people that sit up here, including especially Mary Housley, have integrity. And the question, when she clarified something, that that piece was attached, she didn't write it, and then you kind of alluded to it too, I can't quote you, but you picked it up, that it was attached. I find it a terrible thing for the mayor to continue on insulting you, because that's what it was, an insult, doubting her. When she said she didn't do it, that should be enough unless you can prove When she said she didn't do it, that should be enough unless you can prove otherwise and you can't. She did not write that. And now this, I'm not on Facebook, but this has gone around to many people in this community. And it is a horrible thing to think this person who gives her time and effort on City Council is being insulted in such a despicable manner because I didn't even read it. I read this thing several times. I skipped that little piece because I knew it wasn't for her, from her. So I want to apologize another, as another council person, Mary, you had to go through this tonight and go through it in the community because it's just plain wrong and I had to say that. So that's it.
Kelly, do you have some comments?
Okay.
So Mayor, how would you like our office to proceed? Do you want to have a work, work group? Do you want to clarify some, okay?
Excuse me, he was talking to me. Yes, I think what you suggested, what Kate suggested, a work group is a good idea.
I move to, I, I move that our legal council review the draft that I provided to Kate on Wednesday and identify if this, a way forward to address the cap. And come back to us on Monday of whether a working group is necessary. This may expedite it.
If I may, in discussion on council member's motion, as I have not had time to review what you provided, however, I had a lot of concerns with the, like a lot of it, a lot of the ordinance. And I understand it was intended just to spur conversation.
This is, this is significantly different from the other.
Well, I guess I, we are happy to do whatever council wants to do. I feel like it would, it may be more productive just to kind of go to a works, from our office's perspective, because what I, what hate to have happen is we come back and comment and say, yes, we've tweaked this one issue based off the clarification Councilmember Hosley provided, but we have all these other questions and now we're kind of in the, in the same boat. So I would much rather have Councilmember Hosley's input or the mayor's input in a, you know, a working group where we can have these conversations and move a little bit quicker to modify language and, you know, seek those clarifications so it's not a constant, you know, you see, you ask for clarification, we send the memo back, raises other issues and we just kind of keep doing the dance.
Having more real-time discussions rather than the, the passing back and forth of documents. And as we've just seen here tonight, there, there seemed to be some clarification between just the discussion you had with Attorney Everly. So I, I understand that that might be a way to go, but I also know that we, we know that we've, we've got a timeframe that we're trying to work against. And I think a work group that Dave has committed to, working with, you know, Ms. Hosley, Mayor Brown, or your designee, because I know that George and Jeff aren't here and they might be wanting to be part of the party, but we can make sure that we're, we're meeting regularly and getting this through the door. But again, I think that because we, we know that there's a lot of, there's a lot of documents that go, that go back and forth, it might be just easier just to meet in real time and have these discussions so that we're making real progress instead of just trading documents past each other in email.
And I think that'll allow us to discuss the options and then Councilmember Hosley or the mayor, whoever else is there can kind of say, I think council's going to end up on this, you know, risk-wise, this is the option they want, so then I can draft that option, but we've discussed the other options. So if there's a conversation later, there's the attorney and then at least, you know, two members of council who have kind of said, hey, here's why we did what we did, happy to discuss farther. But again, happy to do whatever council would like us to do.
I have a question. So for this working group, is it just City Council or can people in the community be a part of this group or?
I would probably keep it small so that we're meeting what you all are looking for. As Everly said, that we're looking to get your policy discussion and it sounds like Mary synthesized them as that you're looking for the lower number of STRs addressing parking concerns and a PSE, addressing occupancy. And the more group you have, the harder it is to get groups together, so the more people. So I guess if that's.
We don't want a big, a big group because we already know what we want as a council.
There you go.
And I think we've already kind of expressed that to you. So that's why I'm saying, would it be a good idea to involve maybe one person from the community? And I don't need to be on the committee. I would think Mary maybe.
That, that's completely up, up to council, ma'am. To the extent you want it to be a closed work group, like I propose and Kate mentioned, to the extent you want it to have, be that closed work group, but with the instruction that we have our meetings open to the public, you know, there's lots of ways we can do this, it's just a matter of what you think is most appropriate in this situation. And I will, I will ask if that's the direction council ends up going that tonight or at a, at a subsequent council workshop, just to provide any more detailed policy guidance that you'd like us to shoot for. So not necessarily specific language or minute details, but more of what Councilmember Reeser said, we want a cap and we want to keep the number low. We want to keep our number low, but accommodate those who end up being lawful non-conforming. So anything else you like, are, we want to, we have a concern regarding increased traffic or noise or what are those policy nuts that you want us to try to crack when we're doing this ordinance? Because again, you're the policymakers.
I can't, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Nope.
Go ahead.
Okay. I'll see if I can remember everything, but I feel like at first I wasn't really thinking a committee as a good idea, or it would have been nice to be something that we did last year more early on in the stages, but it does seem like a way to bring some resolution to this. It sounds like we might be marrying the ordinance draft that came back from the Planning Commission with some things that we've heard in the community that Mary kind of put together and Joe had thought about and to more of what I think a lot of us, our vision was originally anyway. We've had so many discussions and a cap has always been a part of them. So having that in there just makes sense to me, addressing the parking and occupancy. I feel like this is a really good move forward and I understand if people are frustrated because, like, I appreciate everything that you're saying and I, I feel like we have had all of these discussions within the last year, but the end product, I guess, even though we worked on it, was missing pieces that I feel like they're important to have so we can kind of close this chapter and move forward.
And I, and I will say, if you don't mind, Mayor, council has been in the weeds a lot on this. And I think one thing that may help us get this over the edge is to understand, in doing general legislation, we're looking for that 80% solution. We're going after those big rocks. We acknowledge small rocks, but we're going after the big rocks. And if for some reason one of those small rocks becomes a big rock later, we'll just amend it. But that will allow us to say, look, we, we've accomplished, we have, we have done the best we can do to accomplish our policy objectives with the risk that we're willing to accept. We recognize this will not result in the ideal outcome on every specific property and that's okay. Because when we legislate, that's just what we have, that's just what we have to be comfortable with. Because if we try to solve for every single situation or every neighbor's concern, not that we're not, not that you're not listening, but if you're trying to address every single one in legislation, we'll never get anything out the door. And it'll be so messy that we'll probably get sued on it anyway.
Thank you. It sounds like the majority of people are in favor of a work group.
Okay. I would just say two councilpersons to keep it manageable because with our excellence committee with three people, it's been many, many months to try and find a time.
And there is a motion on the table.
I'll meet with you tomorrow.
Is there a motion? Well, there's no second.
There's been, what, can you restate? There was no second to her motion.
Okay.
So the motion died.
Wait a minute. There was not a chance for anyone to even second, but you.
I, I think the gist is doing a work group and I appreciate that. So I'll withdraw the motion and then we don't even need to worry about a second. What I would do is I would move to have a, a work group with two City Councilpersons and the attorney and city staff to expedite this and with a target goal of no more than four weeks from today, to have something back to us for review.
And the members of the, of the council, I know Ms. Hosley, you've put in a lot of work here and then maybe.
George, sleeper.
And the mayor or the mayor's designee, because I know that neither Jeff or George are here, but they might want to, to be a part of this, but at least we know at least one of the council members, unless there's anybody else who wants to, because I'm not sure of the time, but I'm going to guess with four weeks, we're going to be meeting somewhat frequently.
And I'll select someone from the community.
So we'll have a five-member group or so?
Wait a minute.
Yeah.
I, I don't think, I don't, one person just can't make all the decisions. I think we should have a, a discussion if you want to say who, what person from the community. So I don't think that, you know, one person should just say, I'm going to pick this person.
Right.
I think there's people who are coming here consistently that should be considered. And, you know, if that's the case, I'll just pick somebody out of the crowd who's consistently coming. Thank you, Elaine. That's right, you know, that's, has some good input. So I just think we got to be fair. This is not just Ward 1, Ward 2, Ward 3. This is the whole city of South Haven. And like you said, Attorney, everyone's not going to be pleased, but we want to at least try to please a big majority of the people. And I just think we need to be fair. I don't want to be a part of the committee. I don't have the time. There's people out here that are, like I'm saying, there's people out here who are coming here every month that I think should be considered, not some random person who has no, who never comes to a, a meeting. I think someone out here who is coming all the time should be considered. That's just my thoughts. Someone else can talk.
I'd like to talk to Jeff and George tomorrow when they're back in town.
I'll second Mary's motion.
Me too.
So it would just be two councilpersons and city attorney and city staff?
Purely advisory working group to present draft ordinances to City Council for its review and discussion. And then the, the zoning one would obviously have to get sent back to Planning Commission with the objective, with the policy objectives being the cap is discussed to address parking concerns and to ensure that there's safe levels of occupancy. Those are kind of the big policy objectives, if I'm understanding correctly.
Will you repeat that?
To a cap and potentially, the, the goal being we want a lower number of rentals. A cap is an option, the work group will discuss other options and make their best recommendation to council to address parking issues, to aid in parking congestion, and then to ensure that the occupancy of short-term rentals is done, is done safely. We don't want 20 people in a four, you know, in a two-bedroom house for a bachelor party or something like that.
And consistent with a neighborhood feel.
And may, to maintain neighborhood feel, which may then replay into, okay, where are we more okay with more rentals versus less, you know, one residential area versus a commercial area? That's a conversation we can have in the.
Just for clarity, we had voted as a group to have occupancy at 12. So, and that was in the ordinance, but we can get into that.
Yeah.
Joe?
I'm just asking, when eight, when the group, the committee comes back with their decision, then the entire City Council gets to vote on it. That way George and Jeff, who aren't here, get to weigh in on it. Is that correct?
Absolutely. And by no means is it, hey, rubber stamp this at all. It's very much, we've taken what we believe are the, the big policy objectives or effects you've identified. We've workshopped it with the attorney's office for the legal side, the city manager and their zoning administrator from the practical enforcement side, two members of council to make sure that we're staying on task in terms of, this is meeting those policy objectives as a group. This is what we think will achieve those policy objectives with an acceptable level of risk and be practically enforceable. We'll also flag if there's situations where, hey, we went around in circles a little bit on this section, here's why we settled on this, but here's the other options we talked about. Plug and play council and then provide comment. We can make, you know, we want to be quickly, quick obviously, but provide some revisions. And then once council's satisfied, we'll send the zoning one to planning with instructions at planning, depending on how into the weeds council wants planning to get. And then it comes back from planning and then we, council's off to the races. With the understanding that we're, we're really shooting to have something in front of council or at least an update within four weeks, depending on how, you know, the meetings go. We may say, hey, council, we're close, or here, here's the regulatory one, we're still working on zoning. So I just want, I want to manage expectations in that sense, but I'm more than happy to come down or down and over as often as is needed. Yes, ma'am?
I have a question about, I have a problem when you say four weeks, but it could be more. I just think that if we say four weeks, I think we should try really hard to say four weeks because like I'm, this is just taking a long time and the community needs to hear something. If we say in four weeks, I think for the community's sake, we should do four weeks.
Come back with whatever we have.
Whatever we, whatever we have in four weeks. I, I say that not as a sense of trying to buy time, but as a sense of just managing expectations.
I understand, but I'm just saying for the community's sake.
Yeah.
But I think we've got some clear direction tonight.
Thank you.
I think we've got some clear, needed, helpful clarifications. And I think we've, we've settled on those big policy rocks and if we can move forward with an understanding of we're not going to solve everybody's problem, but council's making a concerted diligent effort to hit that 80, 90% solution with, with, you know, we can always amend it. I think we'll be able to move forward rather, rather quickly and hopefully with a product that council's happy with.
And we need to vote.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, there's a motion on, on the table.
Does anyone need more information on what we're voting on? You do?
Will you?
I just want to be clear on what I'm voting on.
Okay, can you repeat?
Absolutely. So the motion is to have a work group with two City Councilmembers, the city attorney and city staff to expedite the process with a target goal of four weeks from today to have back before council.
And the council members are Councilmember Hosley and the mayor, the mayor's designee? Is that part of the motion?
I think so.
Okay.
I'll, I'll talk to Kate tomorrow. Okay.
Let's decide.
I think we should decide. Didn't you just say earlier that we're the boss?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm just looking for clarification in the motion. That's all, that's all I'm doing.
Okay.
But yeah, I, it would be for me and Mayor Brown or her designee.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose? The motion passes. Thank you. Moving on. Are we moving on to A, recommending the planning? We're done.
No, we've got, so we're going to be reviewing these with the, with the working group that we are, that we've set up with that last motion and we've got four weeks to get you our work.
Okay. Any more comments from City Council?
Nope.
Will this be, will this meeting be public or?
Yeah, it's televised.
Well, no, they're a work group.
Okay.
Oh, yes. Open to the public.
Okay, that's what I wanted to.
If, if, if council wants it to be.
It will be.
It will be, okay.
Well, yeah, I'm.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
I do too. Okay, any more comments from city manager?
No, thank you.
Okay, if there's no further business, we're adjourned. Thanks, everyone.